Any of the zoning amendments, we're okay with still accepting one. The other big one I had has to do with Green Plan being referred to as or being named as the subcontractor. And why we were exempt from doing that for our.
Okay. So those are two that we can specifically ask them, yes?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Were there any, any others you have any questions? Fun, any specifics? Okay. So. They know we're calling now?
Yep. They're already, they're gonna call.
Dan. What brings up me too? So let's see this on my. For some reason you don't have anything in this room, which is really weird.
You have reached the voicemail box of eight four five eight oh oh seven four.
Okay.
Eight hundred seven four seven five one five eight, yeah?
That was no five, that wasn't the number that you said.
Yeah.
It was the same number.
Sorry, man. Sure? Okay, try it.
Do you wanna call Jessica Waldorf directly?
Try anything.
You have reached the voicemail box of eight four five eight oh oh seven four seven five.
Oh, that's because it's not, it's not getting you out into dialing the eight hundred, they think it's assuming it's a local number.
Try one eight hundred?
Yeah, one eight hundred.
Yeah, the other one got downline on.
Welcome to ready access by level three communications. Please enter your access code followed by the pound sign.
Hello?
All of it.
Thank you, please stand by. You will now be placed into conference.
Hello?
Hello?
How are you? This is Ralph Alun and the Village of Cold Spring trustees. How are you today?
Good, how are you? This is, um, on the phone here you have Jessica Waldorf, the NYSRDA project manager. I brought my colleagues Nicole LeBresky and Dan Carrera that are working on our, on behalf of our rural station contractor ecology environment. So they're coming to their, they're just coming in.
Hello folks. Hello.
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 Okay, so we're going over the NYSRDA grant and we have a couple of questions for you. Hopefully you could answer them for us.
Uh, one question I had was the contract came with Green Plan named as our subcontractor. And I was wondering why we were exempt from following New York State procurement law in terms of putting that out for RFP.
Sure, so, um, NYSRDA procurement laws, um, or procurement rules are really just that, um, you know, if someone submits a proposal to NYSRDA and they already have a contractor on board, we, we don't ask for any additional requirements. We've seen that any, you know, state requirements or anything outside of NYSRDA, these goals have already been met. Um, you know, but say we get a project like, you know, another company has been planning projects in another municipality and they have it already identified a contractor, then we would require proof of a competitive process. But we don't, if someone informs someone as part of the proposal, we don't ask for any additional documentation. We, we've seen that any requirements have already been met.
And what if they haven't?
And, um, and we evaluate those proposals collectively against other proposals that we receive. So it's already a competitive process that we're doing here.
You're assuming that the, that Green Plan met our procurement, our village procurement law policy?
Correct.
And if they did not?
If, if we, if we had to put this out to RFP, what kind of, what kind of delay would that cause?
Um, you know, we're getting very close to executing an agreement here, but it doesn't really cause delay on our end necessarily. It would be more of a delay on your end for the project timeline. But, you know, um, in other municipalities, they typically said RFP process could be three or four months. So, um, you know, but everybody's different, it depends on your specific municipality and what your process is. But, yeah, so it could delay your schedule a little bit, but it wouldn't, that's something that makes it, it would necessarily, you know, push back on. It's a decision on your end.
Jessica, this is, this is Stephanie Hawkins.
Yeah?
Earlier, earlier in the discussions in, like it was in, uh, in March, yeah. Uh, Mike Legori and I had a phone call with your colleague Jennifer, I'm with Daniel. And we discussed this question about the requirement to RFP. And we were advised that, that as you, as you said, the third point you made was that the, because the RFP is a competitive process, that that meets the state requirement. Is that, is that so?
Yeah, that meets NYSRDA's requirements for competitive procurement. If there are other state requirements, that's not something that we get involved in. Um, just like we would never be lead agencies for seekers or anything like that, you know? We, we just follow our internal procurement policies.
We asked Jennifer's, that very specific question, this is Michael Legori. Particular to general municipal law one oh three and, and, uh, and one oh four as it relates to, to bidding. And the, uh, the response that we got back from Jennifer was that because the NYSRDA selection process was competitive, that it was acceptable to submit with a contractor in mind already. And so that's the basis that we're proceeding on. So what we're being told is a little bit different than what we were being told in March.
I think it's, I think we need to make the distinction though here that NYSRDA has competitive procurement policies that are outside of New York state competitive procurement policies. So when we do an RFP, there are these proposals that come in through that competitive process. We consider that enough support that a competitive process is being placed in terms of we've compared your proposal against hundreds of others that were received across the state and competitive selects the team that you proposed to NYSRDA. So we consider that enough justification of a competitive process to meet our internal NYSRDA requirements. If you're saying that there's some other state law that you guys are required to comply with, um, you know, we, we are in a position to overturn any other state law or policy. It's our internal procurement policies that have done that.
Yeah, and we, we, we have the ability to select contractors that are professional consultants without competitive bidding. The preferences for the, for the bidding on the professional consultants. We, we, you know, I think that's pretty well known.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, no, so it sounds like, it sounds like you should be all set then. And, you know, yeah, we've only required additional documentation from customers. If they haven't already submitted to us as part of their project team, you guys did that, so we didn't ask for any additional documentation.
When are we able to accept a consultant or something without an RFP?
Anytime you hire an attorney, your engineer.
That doesn't go out for.
You don't know that, no? The professional consultants are exempted. It, it's recommended, you know? If you look at what the most recent control opinion, so they want you to get the lowest price.
Yeah.
But the lowest price doesn't always mean you're gonna get the best service. So they give you the ability to have that, that flexibility so you don't get lowballed by, let's say, not the best attorney, not the best engineer.
I thought that was, that was given as part of the process after an RFP so that you don't have to accept a low bid.
No, 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 you don't even have to go to RFP, you can hire an attorney tomorrow. You can, you know? It's up to you guys, you know, but you don't have to go through that process.
I mean, this question came to me from members of the comp board and special board in the LWRP who were surprised that Green Plan was included as part of this submission. And wanted to know if it could be put out to RFP because there may be other people out there that they get more bang for their buck or, you know, or better service.
I didn't prepare the grant, so, you know.
Yeah. That, that's just my thought process behind that, so.
I mean, I, my general feeling on the comp plan board was that, uh, Green Plan did not give us the best bang for the buck. I thought, you know, it was sort of like a, I don't know, cookie cutter, cut and paste from another village type of plan.
Yeah, well, you can.
Yeah.
Yeah, what was your second question?
It's speaking my mind right now.
Just real.
Oh, uh, as part of the draft final contract, it, it's written in a way that if we don't pass any of the zoning amendments, there's no issue with us accepting the grant money?
Right, yeah, um, and this is an issue that was brought up there. I mean, municipalities across the state have done, you know, that in typical NYSRDA contracts, we require withholding of payment ten percent for what we deem the final deliverable. And on these, you know, these planning projects, I mean, for NYSRDA, kind of the first time, we've never been involved in local municipal companies, the planner zoning development. And so we were thinking, well, you know, a reasonable final deliverable would be adoption of the planner, um, zoning amendments that are developed as part of this project. But then after discussing this, um, you know, you folks at the Village of Cold Spring and a couple other municipalities, we decided, you know, it might not be reasonable to do that. What if there's some issues that are facing municipality, um, and that might delay adoption or, you know, requires significant revision for the product? So we revised the language in the contract, um, in consultation with Stephanie. Um, just to say that, you know, we'll pay the final payment upon proof that the zoning amendments have been put forward to the village board for approval, but not necessarily withhold them for final adoption.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And, you know, the only project that we did that for, there were several others, so, and I think it makes sense.
Have, this, you said this is a relatively new grant, has any other municipality completed it?
Um, yes, they're, um, we're all getting very close to contract execution across all of the projects. Uh, and nobody's completed a couple of the planner zoning projects in NYSRDA before. Um, you know, the related activity that we did was the regional plan development through based on a perimeter community.
Any else?
Um, good.
Good. Um, I, I think that's all we have, do you have anything for us?
Yeah, um, I heard mention of an LWRP project. You guys have one that's being done concurrently with this contract or something that, um, you know, we should be aware of for coordination with the Department of State?
The, the LWRP is, um, is pending, is, uh, pending completion of this zoning update project. Because much of the LWRP is not currently reflected in our zoning. And so this project, when completed, will sort of implement many of the aspects of the LWRP. And then after this is completed and the amendments are adopted, then the, the group that's working on the LWRP will, will take up that work again and, and finish the LWRP.
Okay, great. I just wanted to let you folks know that, um, you know, I actually met with Department of State on a couple of other projects where, you know, LWRP is kind of involved in, in one of our grants. And so, um, you don't need to worry about coordination on your end. We'll kind of, we're coordinating with our different agencies and just making sure that we don't overlap activities or anything like that. Um, but, and that's exciting for some of you guys have a few different activities going on at the same time, which is great.
Here it is. Like, like perfect.
More a lot of work is another way to put it.
Yeah, we're, 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 we're working hard.
Yep.
Okay, if that's it, um, thank you for your time.
Great, all right, have a great night.
You too, take care.
Thank you.
I do.
Thank you.
Goodnight.
Goodnight.
Um, with that, um, are there any other things that we'd, that we'd want to talk about with this NYSRDA grant?
I, I think we need to discuss the RFP process and maybe looking into putting that out again. Especially if they say it's not gonna hurt our chances of getting the grant or, you know, really impact our timeline. If we did that, Mike, how much delay would it be?
We started tonight, probably ninety days, hundred twenty days. Depends on, on, um, the time between now and noticing. The amount of time you give to prepare, planning firms to prepare a proposal. The time it takes to review and consider their proposals. And then whatever your decision is as far as who you're gonna slot, so.
Because there are New York State procurement laws and the village has a procurement policy. And, I mean, I'm still, I don't understand how we got around doing that.
That's professional services.
Right.
Even still, if it doesn't impact the money, what does it hurt to actually do the RFP? Let's do what other consultants would do for us.
I mean, just over the past weekend, I had members of the special board come up to me that, I mean, they're lost as to where this came from because, I mean, they were told it was born out of the LWRP, but nobody do, I mean, LWRP really knew about it until after the first meeting that you guys discussed it. The HDRV, we didn't know anything about the HDRV component until after you guys discussed it. And, uh, I mean, there's members, the, the chair of the LWRP expressed concern about Ted Fink and Green Plan being kind of rubber stamped onto this, so. I mean, if there's a way that we can put this out to an RFP, you need the procurement laws and there's no doubt whatsoever.
You have a discussion?
I'd make that motion.
Yeah, the only thing.
I'll get a second, you know, a second, a second, discussion?
Well, um, I, I think this is, it, it's fine if the majority of the board wants to do that, that's fine. It's under due diligence, we have obligations to be, um, have, you know, we passed a resolution and we made that, you know, arrangements and it's Green Plan to, so that we could undertake the application and do the work on this project.
We don't have a contract for it, am I right?
Um, no. No, we didn't, we didn't sign a contract. We have a, we have an existing agreement with Green Plan for work on the LWRP, of which this is a component. The agreement is, the definite, the, the agreement, the, the terms of the agreement were, are very broad. And so, the, I mean, the, the agreement is still in effect. It's not like we, we haven't canceled the agreement and then terminated Green Plan, um, and.
But, but that's as far as the LWRP goes, right?
Insofar as LWRP is concerned.
So as long as there isn't an agreement with them specifically, you know, a contract with them to do the work on the, um, the NYSRDA grant.
Yeah, we don't have a problem.
No, no, then, then, you know, you, you, quite frankly, you could have ten planning consultants and whoever you ask is just gonna bill you for whatever, you know, whatever the agreed, you know, rate is for the work. So I wouldn't, I really might be concerned about a contract with them. They might, you know, they might balk a little bit, but it doesn't mean having, you know, any legal standard.
Right, oh, I'm sure.
Okay, um, there is a motion, a second. Hold the favor.
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye opposed, okay? Is that abstained?
Yeah, I'll abstain.
Okay, thank you.
All right, you guys should adopt a motion to authorize and direct the clerk to commence the RFP process. And we should consider, um, publication, number one. Um, for the RFP, some timeframe for contractors to respond? I would say somewhere between. No less than twenty-one days, three weeks? So we should consider that, you know, I don't know if you guys, you think that's all right, twenty-one days? I, I think it's.
Yeah, is that, I mean, it's, um, I'm, um, needs all the time for those, you know?
And then, uh, if we're gonna, our P, then what we wanna do is we wanna make sure that, that we get those all back and we kind of treat it like a bid for, for work as opposed to, you know, it's a bid for services, but identify that all, all the proposals will be opened up at a certain time. So what we'll do is, I'll calculate the twenty-one days. I'll talk to Mary as far as how soon.
All right, so we'll have it prepared for next meeting.
Yeah, well, what we can do is we can, we don't have to wait till next meeting.
Okay.
What we can, if you guys want.
We don't have to wait, that's, you know, must be the ball roll.
Yeah, take a vote to authorize publication, um, at the earliest, uh, possible. At the earliest time convenient for the clerk, so we need the appropriate deadline. And then I'll calculate out twenty-one days from the date that it'll get published. And the meeting thereafter is when proposals will be opening, they're not allowed or not, uh, any.
Okay, is that the only one?
Uh, so moved. I, I can't, I can't read that one for.
Who doesn't want to?
No, a motion to authorize publications in RFP for services.
A motion to authorize the publication of an RFP no less than twenty-one days, correct?
Uh, we'll.
At the earliest convenience of the court.
At the earliest convenience. Yeah, hold on, let me, let me.
He's got his hand up, I'm sure.
It's a motion to authorize an RFP for professional services. In connection with the NYSRDA grant. The publication is early as convenient. And the response time of twenty-one days. Proposals to be read at the meeting thereafter.
That was your motion, correct?
Make a motion to authorize an RFP in connection with a NYSRDA grant, publication as early as convenient, with response time of at least twenty-one days with bids to be opened and read at the following meeting.
Okay.
Any discussion?
Um, I just wanted, uh, I want to document that we're doing this not because the village violated the EOS. You know, that's, that's clear.
Correct, we, we've met, in, in professional services, we are not required to.
We've met the requirements. Right, and that this is, this is, this is not because we, we committed any breach of law.
Right.
But it's because of the board, the majority of the board prefers not to work with Green Plan, but to seek those.
That's practice.
Um, hold the favor.
I do.
Aye.
Aye.
I second. It's okay. I'm all for the force.
Do you, uh, do you guys use a standard form of criteria? I'll write the bid, so I'll make sure that, um, I don't know if there's any particular criteria that you guys have in mind as far as the, uh, the contractors, you know? And we can talk about that, you know, as between now and like.
Aren't the criteria included in the grant proposal of what the qualification for the.
Yeah, I'll, I'll go back to you soon, take a look.
One of our main criteria is, uh, price, always.
Yeah, they have to come in under, under the cost.
Uh, so, is there any posted? I vote aye, okay. Okay, discussion about solar compacting refuse receptacles. Okay, so, um, I believe we did get some, I, I wasn't at the meeting, um, I did get a little bit of clarification, um, from Alan and, and Mary. The, there was never a written agreement for that seventy-five hundred, it was always just a, a good phase from the county. We never ended up with, I don't know whether it was, um, it's an oversight or on purpose. It was really more, um, we believe it was more for the whole tourism aspect, but we knew that, you know, we needed it for, for garbage pickup. Um, it is a, it is, goes into our budget as a, as a revenue item. And because there was never a written agreement, what we have done is put that money, um, it's not just for the overtime. I know overtime is usually always, is what we speak about, but what we do with that is that is the, the Friday pickup, which is the, the main street receptacles, the overtime, when the receptacles are full, uh, Fourth of July. So it's not just earmarked for overtime for picking garbage, but it is, um, what we always use it for is in and around the garbage. So some of those go against, um, just their, their regular hourly rate for the Friday pickup. So, um, it's kind of, um, it, it's not like we just take and do what we want with it. We do put it towards anything and everything, um, tourism and or, or trash pickup, so. Um, and it also, it is a revenue item, so, um, it's, you know, we're kind of, we could be potentially in a sticky place because that seventy-five hundred is already in our budget and earmarked, so. I mean, it, it'd be hard for us to just take some, you know, that money and purchase these unless we go into our budget and find, you know, the equivalent to not spend on it, so. Kind of puts us, um, in, in a place where we need to either wait a year, um, donations or go through our budget and find the equivalent that we're gonna spend and, um, choose to not spend that and then hopefully do well by the end of the year. So, um, with that, I, I know Steph, you had got some more information on the.
Um, yeah, um, so two weeks ago, or last week, I think we, we talked about renting Big Bellies. And based on information that I had gotten from them last month, so I called them to say, to ask about warranty information on the rental units and service, um, and I was told they'd longer rent them. And that this is a change they made, uh, last week, a week and a half ago. So, which is a bummer, but, um, one of the reasons that they made that change in their policy could, could be to benefit, to our benefit because they have inventory coming off leases that they want to move. And so I'm waiting to hear back from them about how much inventory they have and what kind of discount. And I let them know that ideally we would like to buy it for the balance of the list price, not the buy it price. So, we'll see, um, but that's a bummer, you know, I might accept that.
So I will not write a letter to any affect to Mary Ellen, or do you want me to see if it's still at seventy-five hundred and the one pilot?
Um.
I don't ask?
Yeah, you're all right, I, I think one of the things.
Do women do it?
No, yeah, one of the things that, that, um, concerns me is that, that they are, the seventy hu- five hundred dollars doesn't come hard by them, but at the same time it does, somebody other legislators, you know, well, why is close for getting this kind of money? So, um, my, my concern is I, I'm not afraid to ask, but be very cautious about it. So maybe if we, be very grateful that we're getting that money and then, you know, you talk to, to, um, Scutcher Mary and say, hey, you know, why don't, you know, you approach them for us? And, you know, it's just me thinking aloud, but, um, you know, I, I know that the Pennion had legislative stack, you know, there were a few years where it was kind of like. um, you know, I I know that the penny I have legislative stat, you know, there were a few years where it was kinda like, this is not a good idea and we don't think, just close we should be getting that kind of money, so, no, I I I I wanna be cautious about that.
I will not release the seventy-five hundred, I promise.
Exactly, okay, and then um, you know, so from from here, I don't know whether we want to um we look at the budget to find money, um, see how that plays out, start um fundraising, unfortunately, like everything else in government, you know.
I can find a lot of right now.
So, I I think um s- so for, I mean, we should, we encourage that, I just, I mean, as a board, I don't, I don't know if if we wanna wait and see how this stuff plays out, I mean, or, you know, try to find money, wanna.
I guess I I wonder to that point, are we looking for an, are we looking for an immediate solution, are we looking for like an immediate action item, or is it something that we wanna plan ahead for, collect information on, figure out where money can come from and actually have a climate with a plan?
Yeah, I I would, I I I would say both, um, because we don't have that money, so our, the only thing we can really do is is find money or plan, so I think, you know, I I hate to want to say, well, definitely plan for next year, but let's see what we can drum up in the interim and and see if if something falls into our lap and plays our way.
Why don't we just do it all, have, we'll go to the county.
Okay.
Uh, approve budgets for work, so that, you know, you're not selling our seventy-five hundred dollars down the street.
That's the wide now.
Yeah.
Uh, Stephanie will bring back the prices for the ones that are being off of lease and then we'll decide what we'll do.
I I I'm.
Everybody gets one, you get one.
No, no, I.
From what Ryan Beck said, you weren't here for that, it seemed like with very minimal amounts of these machines, they were able to really take their overtime off the board, so.
Mm-hmm.
And they they did, um, I called them back to 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 follow up about the bins that they're, the new bins we're buying and um, they said that they're getting, because I wanted to know, well, if your overtime is staying here, it was it was sort of mysterious, why are you getting three more? So, um, and they said they have those old school, um, you know, cages, they're like eighteen inches long, those rattling stuff for the phone poles, and those are still messy, they don't do overtime, but they're kind of unattractive, so, um, anyway, so that's why they're they're doing this. Um, do do we know, are there any um sort of local uh grant makers, you know, it's a Putnam, I, you know, just kind of poking around, and there seem to be a number in Duchess, but they don't, they don't make grants for Putnam and um and we seem to be, you know, limited in in where we can apply for for funding, except, I mean, I think drumming up private money is a really good idea, and if you can do that, then you should make that.
Yeah, I mean, if you can.
There are some Duchess foundations that give to Putnam, like the Dyson Foundation, or on occasion give to Putnam County.
Dyson doesn't do capital, invest like capital purchases like this, unfortunately, and the, is it the um the community foundations, um, grant, uh, community foundations of Hudson Valley, they do very minimal grant giving, I guess with Dyson money, but to them, to Putnam County. They said that they've got a round coming up in July and that we could look at being awarded one to two thousand dollars. Uh, oh, maybe that's one belly, I don't know.
Got some black garbage bags.
Yes, some bags, right, so.
So I think we'll work what we can with that and and hopefully come up with something, now, I'll talk to Ellen, see if there's, you know, if if she um thinks there's a a place where um, maybe we can just.
So last week when we were talking about these, there were certain, there was other information, um, I think, well, that we were looking for with that, we were wanted to, wanted to know how many bins there were on Main Street, I think there were between fifteen and seventeen on Upper Row.
Eddie, I believe we needed four, two down at the waterfront, one down by the Foundry, you know, there's actually five, one by Cappuccino, one by Pizza.
Oh, for to the belly?
Foundry, the restaurant or Foundry, the.
Foundry Cafe, right, restaurant, those are the the overflow, those are the overflows.
By the cafe, yeah.
That's for the hotspots?
Those are hotspots, those those are ones that.
Oh, okay.
Those are the ones he ends up picking up on a Sunday morning.
Yeah.
Because the garbage is on this side of the street, because what I understand is a lot is coming from Gogo.
You keep saying that, I think it comes from a lot of places, like.
No, only the, only the people down there have have.
There's.
It's the, it's any place that has carryout food, it's, you know, it's just, here's what it is, it's not a criticism of a particular place, it's just.
Yeah. We have a lot of, I, yeah, I mean, like.
We have a lot of work after the food.
Yeah.
Cappuccino.
Yeah, unfortunately, they're all carrying it the same way, most of the time, you know, heading down.
To the trash can.
No, to the river.
At least they put them in the trash can.
Yeah, somewhere near, or near.
I mean, that's that's one thing you can see, you don't see much litter on Main Street, it's usually in the vicinity at least of the.
Yeah, no, I don't.
At least until Saturday night, right?
Yeah, until it gets.
You guys said it now, I had last week, the empty bottles, you know, the pizza, you know, pizza boxes, that's the most horrible one on Main Street.
They just take a lot of room.
They just, they just look, or people put, sorry to gross everybody, but that just.
Yeah, they're, well, I mean, we're in, you know, hopefully we can cut down on some of the private trash.
Little stoney point could actually use one down there. Because, I mean, that is the, if you were down there on Sunday evening, it's like the garbage dump.
Well, with the trail and everything, that would probably be really helpful to have something not on it, but certainly.
Outside the village, but you may wanna look into something.
We had asked um Bush Hill and um and Beacon about their interest in in them, um, and they're sort of calling their department, but that doesn't help us on those data, that's if they're not too.
Mark, alright. Yeah, 'cause definitely we're gonna buy enough to get a decent rate, so if anything, it'd just be.
Is there a bill price? No, so, you know, I.
It doesn't matter, we can buy one and buy another one next week.
Yeah, which is silly, at the moment, okay, um.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, uh, next, approval of minutes, June seventeenth.
I think, well, I think we had to come out of executive session to adjourn. You do, I I know we gave that information.
Did you ask?
I asked somebody, but they didn't know, I don't want to find out.
You have to. I think you asked me and I didn't know. I said, maybe Ralph knows, I'm like, does he know? Ralph, you know?
We're gonna look to see if I know.
Consulting our archives.
I'm gonna go check my notes.
We spoke for probably half an hour, at least, now it's probably nine fifty.
Yeah, it's close to ten o'clock.
Yeah, it was?
Yes, it was, it was ten-ten when we left here.
Kitchen was like that, I love you, I cook.
Oh. Don't have it.
Other than invented, I mean, I think they have.
Maybe my, maybe my other notes.
The motion was made, it was seconded, I recall.
Yeah, yeah, I maybe my other notes, so, um.
Next time we'll call you eight in the clock tonight.
Yeah, I'll put it, I'll put my notes in the other.
I can check my two, I didn't break my test last week, you know, I need to track them, probably going now.
Okay, um.
We have to post them, no, we have to, we have to make haste to post.
Let him post mid- draft.
Okay.
And then, next meeting, once we have a time confirmed.
Okay, so, um, bill approval?
Uh, Penny.
We do, we can get a chance to look at it.
Okay, that's fine. Okay. Uh, review bids for parts of oil burn, waste, water.
There's only one bid.
And Greg has recommended that we accept it?
This is the uh regarding on one, only one bid, in addition to the advertisement for bids placed in P C N R, I spoke with several local P and H contractors on the meeting, regarding the work, even though we only received one proposal, I would recommend that the mayor and board accept it. So we may move forward further, I would like the board to consider utilizing funds from the contingent account G zero 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 dot one nine nine zero dot four hundred, as it was not figured into uh this year's budget. Don't know why it was advertised, um, and he spoke to several, whether, assuming it showed not too bad.
Oh, you don't know why we only got one, don't you?
No, but it was, right, it was advertised, we did speak to other workers.
I'm guessing it's 'cause they have carried out of that basement.
Uh, could be.
Oh.
Uh, they might have to actually cut it apart to get it out of there, 'cause I think the building.
Was built around utilities, just about, the generator, all of those, so, um.
Well, um, if Greg is happy with it, I'm I'm just judging, I'm looking at the motion, we accept the bid from Padala for Dyson, so.
Okay, is there, okay, any other discussion?
I'll second it.
Hey, hold the favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Review revise docking application for River Rose.
We're just changing the time, I believe, um, fifth of September.
Uh.
Or, from the, sorry, Friday, September nineteenth, we still have September fifth. The um, I don't have their original application, the only other boat coming in that day is the uh.
They're sort of being kinda near each other, I mean, do you think this is gonna work out eventually?
Yeah, I I uh, I wish you. The days, the, um, Friday Hudson's out there by one forty-five, River Rose.
Well, the River Rose, he's, he does say two P M. Okay, I mean.
So it's what, fifteen minutes, and they can usually work with one another.
Two P M, seven.
Two to seven.
Do they pay to dock?
What's that?
Do they pay to dock?
River Rose, yeah, yeah. Friday Hudson does too, but they just, Friday Hudson just takes off, they don't uh the seniors board, board from the bus.
Onto the Pride of Hudson?
Onto the Pride of Hudson.
Just what do they pay in there?
Two dollars a foot. I don't think it's a complication. Fourty-five, two, two o'clock.
A motion to accept, reschedule, the request to reschedule, is that what it would be?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion?
Just when you contact them, let them know that there's a boat there before them.
Yeah.
And that, not to tie up against it.
Not to.
I I don't think the River Rose will do it, but.
Okay, uh, hold the favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, okay, um, I don't, did I give you the, I'm docking, actually, I'll do it on the whole business, I'm just, you know. Um, the dates for the West Point, did I give you those dates? There's total four?
Yeah, they're, they're all fine, except the last one, um, and no compenact for that, there's two boats around the same time, I talked to Richard Roger, the harbor master.
Okay. Could I, tell you that the West Point can do four, um.
Did we discuss the two meetings?
Okay, I didn't, I wasn't sure if I gave you the information.
He did a dry run over here, but he still didn't, he still didn't do a, well, he didn't come up with what is necessary, he's got proper, proper spare cases to do whatever to
He did. How'd they do, they do it? Okay. Okay.
compensate for low tide, high tide, you know, but uh.
Perfect. Wonderful, hopefully that works out for us, um.
I would turn that dock in please.
I don't think we are.
I don't think we were, but I think we should. Does it, one's gonna pay three dollars, they all should pay three dollars.
Right, I couldn't remember how we left that conversation, how did we leave that one last week, was it, you were waiting to do that?
We'll take that one.
Yeah, we're waiting, that was our proposal to uh get it out.
We'll do uh, we'll take that up on the whole business while we're talking boats, um. Um, okay, forestaunters, Mayor, and the Builds Board Trustees, July first, Mayor Fulun, Trustee Campbell, Valman, Hawkins, and Fatty. I'm writing to you because I'm out of town and unable to respond to person to this in a timely manner. I'm writing in my capacity as a volunteer who has worked with the village staff and officials for the past three years, helping to plant, select, plant, water, otherwise care for these street trees. I'm also writing, the village resident personally donated hundreds of dollars of my own money in addition to countless hours of my time to the spring's planting of the trees on Main Street. I watched the June twenty-fourth Board of Trustees workshop meeting and video and have been following strange controversy about a red oak tree and trustee Hawkins with proper approval, um, that America, the volunteer isolate and care for during hot summer months, I'm concerned. I suggest some wrongdoing and frankly, I am personally very discouraged by it. There are countless problems with the village own trees, and there are very little money and very little time and or interest on the part of overworked staff, not much officials to devote to helping improve on these problems. My volunteer work cost the village nothing, trustee Hawkins' volunteer care of the red oak cost the village nothing, the work of the many other volunteers who are helping water trees this season or helping put together a plan for a tree commission, cost the village nothing, cost you nothing and it net you all this hard work and all these donations of funds and all these great trees on the street. Our whole community benefits from this mission, it should be a non-political, your full support and good faith of this volunteer effort should be an over. I appeal to your community spirit, please don't allow personal or political disagreement to trump this good work. I ask that anyone interested in volunteering their time to the tree effort, please join us instead of act in ways of that divide us. If the issue is improving communication between everyone who is working on this project, then let's improve it. Trustee Bowman, Fatty, Campbell, if you'd like to be a volunteer, planting, planting, and care of the village certainly needs a lot of help, we, uh, and we, other volunteers would certainly welcome. But we should proceed in a spirit of collaboration, not accusation. If we cannot agree to do this, I will rightfully, excuse me, I will regretfully be forced to withdraw from the effort. An improvement effort like this will not drive and succeed in the actions of good faith and the type of support. Sincerely, Jennifer Zara. Um.
Um, if I could say something?
In additional note, I'm sorry, in additional note, as you all know, I am trying my best to help the village organize a simple, efficient, long-term plan for the village tree management as chairperson of the tree advisor committee.
No, sorry.
However, the views expressed here do not in any way represent the committee or anyone else other than.
I saw Jennifer the other morning at at breakfast, and I told her that I had something I was working on, and it was something that I alluded to last week, one of the things, um, the Leos are always looking for projects, and it's just been my feeling, there's no community pride, no street pride. The weeds are choking the daylilies out there, even I can't get to the weeds in front of my place, and I do pay attention. And um, when the Lions did their installation last week, I talked to David Wilburn, he told me to get in touch with Kelly McAvoy, and I sent her an email, and as soon as I hear from her, I was gonna have a meeting with Jennifer to try to get these kids to get the weeds out of the gutters, and you know, not to plant in in the tree beds, because, you know, I mean, if that's what you guys want, that's fine, but just to clean them up.
Well, if they wanna weed, that's.
Yeah, just to, you know, I mean, getting them clean is step number one, and then after that, whatever, you know, maybe Tony Barter or somebody can give a list of all the things that look nice and grow well in the tree beds, and, you know, I don't have a block contest to see who plants the nicest tree, you know? But, um, anyway, that's one of the things that I just didn't hear from Kelly, so I didn't get back to her and I didn't say anything here, but as soon as I do hear from her, you know, the
Hey, that's really great, we have, um, sixty, there are sixty-five pits on uh Main Street, so.
Because those kids are looking for projects. The Leos are an amazing group of kids, and they don't have enough projects, I don't know, Bruce, maybe you know?
Yeah, it's. How many of them?
I don't, I don't know how many there are now, I mean, but I I formally, many years ago, they changed leadership many times, so Jimmy Fidel did three years, I'm not sure about forty-five, forty-five now, so it's it's really increased the numbers, and they all try to get their, they try to get their time and put it that way.
Because there's the Leo, the Lions pride, and city pride, and I just thought it would really make a nice thing.
Yeah, I think it's really fantastic.
Yeah, Tom's chipping out and the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, so, um, yeah, you could do that, perfect.
Yeah. I just wanna, um, sort of further to that, I I wanna um sort of echo what Jen was saying about communication, 'cause I'd like to acknowledge your concerns about better communication and and, you know, in in future, if if you have, if anybody has questions about what I'm working on, I'd really appreciate it if you would ask me directly and not suggest that I'm doing something wrong, or, you know, like assumption, jump to conclusions, you know, and talk about it first. And um, and as she said, you know, if if you're truly interested in getting involved, there's a lot, there's a lot of work to be done.
To the discussion of better communication, other than the smartphone suggestion I had, does anybody else have any ideas of how we can spread the word?
Uh, I know for myself, um, I I get caught up, I mean, you know, there's some days where I'm, there's, you know, I I got probably a hundred emails and texts. And you know, you just get going through it, and I I don't notice who was C Cedar, who wasn't, or it was just a conversation. And, you know, you just get going through it and I, I don't notice who was C Cedar, who wasn't, or it was just a conversation that I was working on and didn't, you know, just. Didn't realize that, you know, it's like important, you know, and, and, you know, even in the last few days, I mean, you know, I've had, you know. Been focusing, uh, you know, better, um, sharing information, um, you know, um, you know, so, uh, for myself, um, like I said, you know, in my smartphone, I didn't have a building, you know, group, you know. As you saw today, that is now set up, so, um, so, uh, I, I will definitely do my part in, in, you know, um, sharing as much and more information, um. And we'll, uh, you know, it's funny, the highway guys, you know, they're, uh, they're not tech savvy yet, um, so I don't get a lot of email communicate, I don't get any email communication from them, so. A lot of times, to be quite honest with you, I don't know what they're doing, they're doing their daily chores and if it happens to be replacing sidewalks or not replacing sidewalks. You know, I don't know, not because they're not telling me, it's just, you know, that chain isn't easy, so, you know, we'll, you know, work on that with, with their projects.
Do they have access to a computer?
Uh, no.
No.
They do not, and unfortunately, um, I, I went down this road a couple, you know, a few years ago, same thing, you know, um. Marinus is still here and, you know, with sidewalks and we didn't know and, you know, we're, hey, you know, you guys on a computer? And the reality was is you can put it in here, but, you know, it's, you know, the horse to water thing, so, um, but.
Look, it's good and bad.
Oh, yeah.
You know, every plus is, is a negative, there goes a lot of it.
No, no, there is, but there are, there are some things that.
Yeah, no, there's benefits, the benefits are good.
There's that, yeah, no, there's, there's, I mean, there's, there's, you know.
There's the, you know, possibility of trouble.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you, you know, you run the risk, I mean, I, I, I like to discourage the communication, that's what we should work on.
No, but, right, you know, but it's hard when, when no one has, you know.
You communicate over, you know, over email and at some point you're having a meeting.
Sure.
Yeah.
You know, and that's really what the issue is, 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 you know, you're making decisions over the phone and those are, you know, decisions to be rendered at a board meeting.
Yeah. Sure, sure.
That, that's the, the problem, you know, is the technical law and the technology.
Yeah. And, and I, I mean, I've noticed some of us, and I think we're, we're getting better at, you know, thank you, you know, short answers as, you know, not to go down that road and, you know, we, sometimes we get sucked in, but. If you see lately, you know, a lot of the communications are, you know, it's just throw out the opinion and it's just that, well, I don't, you know, and, 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 you know, and so, um.
So, you see, is, is the intention here that we, um, that we're sharing information, but we're not talking about it, I guess I'm.
I, I think my intention is, yes, my, my.
Or drawing, or drawing conclusions or taking, not taking, deciding to take action or not take action based on these email exchanges, because it sounds, that sounds like a meeting and.
I, I would, I, I would think, y- you know, for me, it's, it's getting you the guys, the, the information. And then from that, you know, if we can't. If, if it's something that needs to be fully bettered and discussed, then, you know, just this is the information and it will be at a meeting if it's, you know, just, hey, you know. This tree is there and we don't think it's a good idea, okay, let's, let's further this at, at a meeting, you know, cause I, I, you accidentally answer the email, you know, with your opinion, but. You know, then, then I think we, you know, you realize that, oh, wait, we're, we're beyond just our opinion we're into, so, um, and, and again, I mean, you know, there's no shortage of foil requests, so, um. Um, you're with that, um, so, I, I, I think, I think we're getting better and we have work to do, um, so. I'll work on it. Okay, um, okay, um, on whole business, um, the public hearing for the Grove is next week? Um, the fifteenth, two weeks, okay, the, the, the hearing notices, uh, set the price at no less than five thousand dollars. I know we had, there was some discussion about their, um, credit, um, proven credit and also, um, asking them to. Pay extra money, uh, because, you know, we, the RFP said as is for the fuel tank, we went and spent fourteen sixty, um. To make sure that there was no issues, uh, any RFP, there was mention of, of, uh, credit and, you know, they, they met those. They met those requirements, so, um, and it's, I, I kinda wanna hash out anything we want to now, so the public hearing is in. You know, public hearing, you can, you know, can theoretically be the end if, if, if nothing, if nothing comes up, um. I, I, I'll give you my personal feeling, um, you know, we, we, as much as, um. It'd be nice to get every drop we can out of that, that building, for me, uh, it's been nothing but, but, um, issues in my opinion, um, and. I, I'm personally ready to, to move on with everything that they have met in the RFP, um, but that's, you know, that, that, that's my, my opinion, you know, that's. That's what I feel should happen. Any other feelings?
I mean, I, I'm ready to make a motion. I'll make a motion that we, uh, go forward with the five thousand dollar, accept the offer and, uh, go to the public hearing.
I'll second it. Do we have to write it says?
No, I, I, you know, I just need consensus of, of, you know, for the board as to what the price is gonna be, that's all.
Hmm.
I, I don't, I don't agree, I think that because, uh, because they asked us to make improvements to the property that we should be, that the taxpayers should be reimbursed for that, I mean, this is. That comes out of our general fund, we pay that before we get money from them and, um, that means that the net experience, the, the simple transaction is, you know, less than four thousand dollars.
Sure.
And, um, and then on top of that, going to the, the credit worthiness, um, I, I really think it's important for us to focus not on, not on the Marinus here. The Marinus are good people, Marinus are neighbors up the hill, um, and like other people who wanna buy property, they have aspirations and, um, but I think that. Our obligations are to the village and the intention of moving this property along is to move it to the possession of somebody who, who will, who will restore it and. And that requires the means to restore it and I don't believe a statement that says I'm gonna be, you know, borrowing money from my in-laws is. That doesn't reassure me that within the long term, the restoration will be, will be complete and, um, and, and I, and the reason that I don't believe that's adequate is because I have an obligation. To the taxpayers of the village, if the intention is to move this National Historic Register asset out of the village possession into somebody else's, you know, because they're gonna restore it. My obligation is to make sure that they can do that.
And there is a clause that if there's a fault on the property, it reverts back to the village, sure?
I, I circulated draft language for, and, and again, I, I put in things for you guys to consider as to what should be the, the, the final version. So, if you follow the, the language of the RFP, you know, the representations in the RFP are, you know. We'd like to attract someone who's gonna come buy this and then, and then do restoration. I took some of the information that Steve gave us back, um, and, and incorporated that as, you know, almost a guarantee. And, and the reverter is a, it's really a difficult, right, the concept is very simple, you know, there's one action and then another action follows, right, or generally inaction. Uh, in this case, it's the, uh, uh, there's a few things, one is if the building is demolished, title will revert back to the village. Um, it's good and bad, okay, you know, let's say there is a fault of a mortgage or there's an oil spill or there's, you know, there's a host of other things that could happen. And then the village would be left, you know, holding the bag because of the reverter clause, so, it, it, it's good and bad, but a, at the end of the day. Um, the reverter part in the event of a, a demolition, not very complicated, I think the language is pretty clear, we just wanna make sure that, that. Um, if there's, uh, you guys are familiar with the concept of force majeure, that's, you know, an act of God, war, terrorism, things like that, that those are really items that are out of someone's control. Let's say, you know, another hurricane, that, that's not something that, that should, someone should be penalized for, not only do they lose their investment, but then they lose their property out of it, you know? Um, the, I think the second half of the items that I gave you guys to consider are probably the meat of this and that's where there's Steve and his wife and their attorney, where they're gonna have to sit and focus on, which is.
Hmm.
Um, I don't know if there's, there's, um, we don't really have too much jurisdiction over, you know, what'll go on on the inside, but it, it's really for the public's purpose, I think, what goes on on the outside and what. And, you know, you don't want to sell this thing and then have it languished there for another, you know, fifteen years and nothing go on on the outside. So, I, I suggested some criteria that I thought that, consistent with the RFP, um, to be negotiated so that. Steve isn't getting into a situation whereby, you know, he's gonna be in default in twelve months, there's provisions in there for going back to the Board of Trustees for an extension of time, but, but. I laid it out so that, um, there's some, some steps to be achieved within various timeframes. And, and, and so, like I, like I said, I tracked the RFP as to what those were, I, I added timeframes, I put, you know, like nine months, twelve months, thirty-six months, stuff that I thought, you know, was practical. And if you guys have comments and, and thoughts about that, then let me know and once we have a consensus, then I'll forward it on to, uh, you know. Whatever happens after the public hearing, you guys, you know, vote to, to, uh, um, to move forward, um, I, I'm assuming Steve will have counsel in connection with the current title, I, I would assume you would, you know. Purchase title insurance and do a search and make sure that there's nothing out there that, you know, we don't even know about it, we, you know, we don't know, we don't, we haven't had, you know, I don't know if we had a title search when we acquired title.
I think the estate performed that in two thousand and three. I mean, and that's the other thing here, is that if we don't decide not to move on this, there was a clause in that initial donation to the village that if the village didn't do anything with it for five years, that it revert back to the estate. Um, I mean.
We'll take it then.
Well, if it's automatic, then, then this is all for naught.
Yeah, well, it's not automatic, they, I think they request the RFP.
Do we, do we have the document?
I, I don't.
Yeah, it's, uh, I know that it is actually posted on the website and materials.
In, in.
We have it on file, sure.
All right, so, anyway, I just put that out there for you guys to chew on, you guys take a look at what the, what those criteria are and then we'll, we'll get that over here.
One of the quirky things in the village is that everyone knows everybody, so the executor of the estate is Pennington Ag, so.
Gosh.
He'd be more, more than willing to accept.
He'd be happy to take it back, I'm happy to take it back.
Yeah, okay, so we'll, we'll, we'll circulate that, um, and then.
Yeah, just, just focus on those timeframes, that's what I'm, I'm most concerned about is, you know, do you guys think nine months is enough time to do certain things or twelve months, eighteen months? What you guys think is reasonable is what?
Yeah.
What I want.
And Steve will be back in about a week so we can.
Are there timeframes we wanna discuss with him though and find out what's realistic, you know, if he?
Well, I think what we should do is we should say, this is what we want, okay, I mean, if you guys are on the same page, then I'll, I'll go to Steve and say, hey, Steve, this is what we want.
I think we shouldn't, I think we should do that before the public hearing.
Then let him come and test.
I, I like to do it before the.
Absolutely, perfect.
And, and it's not intended to, you know, he's our.
No, 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 no.
Not intended to be deal breaker type things, it's.
I was telling you, well, instead we're, you know, gonna protect a lot of people.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect, so, get that and, uh.
So I'd like one of those things that we say that we want, I want it to be sixty-four hundred sixty.
And we can absolutely ask. Um, the Fuhr Trail, did, uh, wreck?
Oh, are we not finishing?
Oh, I'm sorry, oh, you guys know more about the Grove, I'm sorry.
Well, no, 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 there was a motion, there was a second and then there's been discussion and now we're, are we going to?
Okay. Not necessary, but we'll definitely, cause it was made in a second, so, um, all those in favor, I, what was the motion?
For five thousand.
The motion said it's a five thousand dollars.
Fuck me, yeah, Ralph, come on. Sorry.
We're getting along, we're trying to get through this.
Which, I, I mean, our discussion just now doesn't really affect that in any way.
Not the price.
Yeah, not so.
But the obligations remain the same.
Would probably cost us the fourteen sixty to relist the RFP.
Probably.
And, and go through that whole process all over again, so.
I assume that this is a price that they won't, I mean, I, what I think is really funny about this is we assume that what they come with is what we have to accept and I think it's, you know. When you negotiate for home purchase, you don't, you know, unfortunately, it's, it's not like that, you know.
I don't disagree with you on that, I just think that it's gonna cost us more to, to try and get more money, because if we do walk away, we have to realize.
We're not at that point, I, I don't think we're at that point yet, you know, cause we haven't discussed that with them.
The oil tank, now that it was identified and discovered, no matter what we did with the building, whether we were gonna give it away to the RFP or do whatever, it's our obligation now to remove it because we know that it's existing.
It's actually been removed and everything's fine, so.
No, but I mean, even if we decided not to go forward, I mean.
I, I think it, it's, it would be good practice, once you became aware of an underground storage tank on the property, to assess it and remove it.
So, whether Steve Marino was involved or.
Right, the big difference is, you know, I, I, the issue really is, is, there's no way to quantify how many people looked at that and just turned the page because of the environmental risk. That's, that's what the real issue is, is, is people look at that and they say, you know, that's Pandora's box right there, you have no idea how much it's gonna cost to remedy something, so you turn the page. You know, and that, that's already the issue. You got it.
And fourteen hundred dollars is half a Big Belly, we're over here trying to figure out how we're gonna afford these, this could be it.
So the motion was to set the price at five thousand?
Yes.
Uh, any, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
Uh, opposed?
Nay.
One opposed, thank you.
Do you vote?
I vote aye. Um, Fuhr Trail's wreck, did you guys get a chance?
Yeah, we went over the entire, uh, concept of the Fuhr Trail, um, they're well aware of the meeting on the ninth, I don't think that's gonna have any impact on the wreck's decision, but they, uh. And we went back over the conceptual plan for Mayor's Park, long range plan and, uh, discussed pretty much everything in detail, I mean, the only comments were of course, uh. Related to the softball field, but there, you know, but it was also a discussion as far as relocating the basketball, in the, in the basketball court in that D check. The only other comments that came up were they'd rather see diagonal parking when it's treated, or, other than that, there weren't any, uh, really negative comments regarding the Fuhr Trail.
Okay, um.
Were there limitations to diagonal, was there a reasonable degree of diagonal?
I, I think they're getting, I, I, I don't know, I think you can get more parallel, but I think what, I, I mean, I, I think the good thing is that they're not in disagreement, so why don't we?
Wait, I'm sorry, wait, they can fit more in parallel than they can in?
Um, s- I'm sorry, straight in.
Oh, they fit more straight in.
Permanently, then diagonal.
Okay. Okay.
Um, and, and for, personal thing is if you're coming the other way.
Yeah, sure.
But either way.
No, I understand.
Um, so I, I think what happens, I, I think because they're in agreement and we're in agreement, so we're ready, I, I think, you know, why don't, you know, reach out to, um, Richard and, and, and Ron Gaynor and. See what their feeling is, I mean, you know, cause the good thing is, is that, you know, the wreck is in favor, which is, which is a big deal, cause we don't wanna, you know. Upset them, um, so, see if there's a reason why they did, just, you know, more parking, not parking and, and, you know, so, cause we're ready to move forward.
That's the importance of taking advantage of the fact we have sidewalk for brand defense.
Yeah, that is great. That is great.
Uh, and the safety concerns that were, were up in fact, that the kids aren't gonna be walking in, getting, getting around through cars and, um, through a rotor.
Yeah, right.
But there's a lot of pros to it, just not as many cons to, uh, to really.
Sure. So, yeah, reach out to Richard, see what Gaynor says about the, the change in the parking and see what we need to do for them now so they can move forward. Anything else for, uh?
One, two, discuss docking fees?
Um, I was thinking, there's, I'm still on.
Oh, you were in.
Um, there's a meeting, the eighth, wayfinding, I can't go, um, uh, I think Gretchen, cause she's wayfinding for us, is going to attend, um.
Yeah, I'll be the one myself.
Okay.
Isn't there a Fuhr, meeting on the ninth?
The ninth, I'm sorry, the.
No, that's a different one, isn't it?
Oh, it is, I don't know, um.
Where is?
Is there a public meeting on the ninth?
That's the ninth.
The Fuhr Trail, but the manor is the.
Yeah, the public.
Okay.
Where is the wayfinding?
That one is at the, um, Beacon.
It's in Beacon.
Yeah, the, um, what's it called?
Beacon Institute.
Beacon Institute, correct. Don't worry, we're not doing business.
I'm making an opinion, I'm directing traffic.
The, um, one, we need to set up a, a workshop to discuss the building department, right? Okay, cause we still wanna discuss it, correct?
Well, we're, I think, we had, we had this, we had.
Consolidation, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
You're doing fees and consolidation?
We're doing, I thought we were discussing fees next week.
Okay, fees next week.
Fees next week, but consolidation the following week?
Um.
Consolidation next week.
No, I, uh.
We can do it over the phone, over the smartphone.
I am away next week, I'm on a family trip, so my apologies.
You're away next week?
Yeah.
That's our monthly meeting, right?
I know, my apologies. Kids rule.
Dylan, Dylan, Dylan.
Dylan wants to go to Hershey, he's gotta go to Hershey.
Okay, so we're not talking about fees next week?
I think fees are fairly simple, so there's no reason.
Okay, have we heard from Bill what he's based those on, I think we asked?
Uh, I think he was waiting to present them.
He's, oh, he's gonna represent that, um, okay.
Sorry, we can reach out to him if you want.
They're all tied up in signage.
If we, we can reach out to him and.
Actually, he doesn't need to be, cause it's not enforceable.
Oh, that's coming up too, relax. Okay, so, okay, we'll do that, and then um, do the following, it's a twenty second.
Consolidation twenty second.
Yeah.
Wait.
Discussion.
Wait, not the fifteen? Sorry.
Oh, no, it's a fifteen.
Did I just not, did I just? The fifteen, we have a public hearing, right?
It's two, it's two, Grove and the one-way sign.
Cause the one-way sign couldn't get on the eight, is that what happened?
Right.
Yes, because of time.
But I don't, that's not gonna be a big one, and the Grove won't be a big one.
No. Okay, so why don't we do that, fifteen's will do that, and um, so why don't we, what would be kind of helpful if, um, maybe we'll um, let me know what we, what everyone is looking for, for information for that consolidation meeting. Dockside agreement, where is that?
I got comments back up to the state.
Okay.
Oh, we had a question about insurance premium, right?
No increase.
That's good, and.
Stabilization, I just, I'm speaking, um, came on other business, I put that up.
Good, and then the other one was, um, three hours, the other one was, um, like maintenance, and according to, according to Eddie and Joe, it's like three hours, twice, uh, two or three times a month, so.
Just for general, you know, mowing.
For general, mowing, yeah.
And they actually mowed it this year.
Yeah, the, the touch of our machine is.
That makes sense.
Last year, when they said, too bad we still couldn't do it.
What about the discussion about the the uh, the stabilization?
Oh, the stabilization, uh, the stabilization project grant was not awarded, I think, but it did.
It's coming up soon, it's supposed to take about.
Not yet, I don't want it, right?
No, it's a.
The concern that was raised was, do we do, do we enter into dockside, or do we wait until we see if the shoreline will be stabilized?
Right, that's the main, that's the main, that's Mike enough.
Right.
Right, so we have, you know, we have uh, um, an agreement in I had gotten revisions up to the state, we had run through them, which essentially was running through SENS uh letter, those points, whether they were incorporated in that agreement. And then Stephanie and I had a further discussion about uh making sure that there were appropriate standards in 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 the agreement, or wherever there was discretion to be applied to the state. Because it, you know, it could, there could be random applications of various different criteria, we wanted to elicit that, so that's what's pending, and um, um, but once that's all settled, then the question is, do you move forward, or do you wait until you figure out what the deal is with the stabilization? So, that that's my understanding of where we're at right now.
Well, is there something, can there be something in the agreement that?
Well, I I'm not even positive, you know, I'm not a hundred percent in in understanding. I have a, you know, a concept of what needs to go on, but but um, I'm still not, you know, a hundred percent familiar with with, you know, the stabilization project itself.
Well, yeah, then.
Stabilization was the the biggest piece that Mike put up, the rest of the list of what we talked about, over the above, lawn care, which only takes three hours of time. There's a lot more to it down there, the state's only gonna allow, on the basis of anything down there, five years, nothing more than five years, there's not construction wise. So I think Mike Armstrong's other point was, what is the village actually gonna get out of this, is there anything in it for us, other than the fact we're gonna sort of manage this property down there?
Right, right.
And stabilization.
Stabilization's gonna take years and a half, a year and a half.
Yeah, I I think, for me, I don't.
I mean, if you guys say, hey, look, there's there's a benefit to us, we wanna move forward, go forward and make sure this is done.
I I don't.
If you do that, that's fine.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see, I I don't see dockside disappearing, you know, as far as stabilization stabilization goes, I understand the point, and it's it's a valid point.
You know, that means you've talked about the deal.
But it's not a, um, you know, in five years, dockside's not gonna disappear because of, you know, shoreline erosion. Um, but I I think definitely, you know, maybe something needs to be in the contract about that project, you know, what happens when, when if it starts during our agreement? Are we told, well, you know, you're not allowed on there, you know, that like that that, you know, that criteria. Um, I I would almost, I mean, you know, there's days where I'd rather not enter agreement because, um, what is in it for us? But but I think what happens is that, um, you know, for the future, for the things that we do, and Fourth of July, and music series, um, future potential of acquiring, I mean, I just think it's good faith to enter into agreement, even though it's not, we don't wanna manage property that doesn't belong to us. But I just think, you know, the big picture, you know, may maybe we enter agreement to say, look, you know, we wanna partner with the state, you know, and, you know, if there's ever a chance to get more control, total control, give to us, kind of type of thing, I I think you're you're better, it looks better to to show that you've had an agreement with them and that you've been working with them. Um, but at the same time, um, you know, what what is in it for us, and what about the stabilization project when it starts, what is, you know, you know?
I mean, we're we're looking in the long term to make improvements down there, whether it's concession stand, or a dock or something, the five-year title of it, I mean, that that's a major killer for anything. Cause if we're gonna improve the property, we're not gonna give it back.
It's a longer term now, though, it's a ten, it's a ten-year term, but still, though, but to your, but to Mike's point, um, I I think there's still the
Yeah, it goes to ten, yeah, it goes to ten.
Either way.
Built up in.
The concern though, that whatever improvements we make to the property, those belong to the state, and, you know, I mean, that's, we need it's.
Yeah, they're very strict about, you know, any revenue goes back into the property type of thing, and.
That goes back to property.
Well, this revision remained silent about that, so we.
Yeah, we want you.
Right, okay.
They, they, they took out, um, basically all of the items in that letter.
Right.
Were either addressed, and this was the point that you and I went to, which was, they were either addressed or take, just those topics were removed, and they were left silent, which doesn't
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Sure.
Some points are fine to just be silent on, but the things that, you know, we want affirmative rights on, that we wanna have specifically set forth in the lease, but the restriction about putting the money back into the property, that was not, that wasn't in there when I went in.
Right, and that was, that was one of the, the, yeah, that's, that was one of the sticking points for us, because we felt like, well, unless we were making a lot of improvements, then we were gonna have to pay for, that there really wasn't, you know, the whole idea that we would be managing permitting and permit and access, and being able to look to it to generate a little bit of revenue for us.
Do you want me to go back and see if we can incorporate either a um, uh, an automatic renewal for another ten, or maybe automatic renewals for five?
I mean, yeah.
I think, I would, I think an automatic renewal is a really good idea.
Yeah, automatic renewal, um.
Yeah, I mean.
With, subject to like notice and.
Yeah, automatic renewals, the, you know, the whole harness about shore stabilization, and when they s-
Who does that work? Is it, is it? It's not us, right?
No, it's a grant, but it's, I mean, it's a big project, I mean, the whole property's gonna be mostly disturbed and, you know, and it's gonna be, you know, based on what the shown us, it's gonna be amazing when it's done, but a lot of disturbance.
So maybe we can add to the contract language that if, you know, that if we're unable to access the property or make use of the property at some point during the term of our agreement, that our term will be extended for, you know, day for day, or, you know,
Right.
to the amount of time that we don't have access to it anymore, so that our license to use it is, you know, like, valid.
Yeah, I mean, I I think, you know, we're looking for a good partnership.
I mean, I'd be interested to see what kind of degree of it they have with, like, the Menendez Island Trust, whether that's a longer term than a ten-year, because I mean, they, and they're.
That may be the old agreement that we look at.
And they're doing a lot of work out there where they're improving, stabilizing the castle, the the home and everything, so I mean, I can't imagine that they're doing that work with just a ten-year promise from the state.
Yeah, I think it's only fair that we get the same kind of.
I don't know, there's other areas, I mean, quote unquote, partner, there's sections down there, they do that.
Yeah, I mean, we talked to Bill and his boss, who are all about, you know, agreeing with us.
Well, there's an incentive for that, sure, wherever they can reduce the state costs, they're gonna do it.
Do you know somebody at the manor, I don't know?
Do you have that one?
Me, oh.
I mean, I I think they just renegotiated their agreement out there, cause I worked, when I worked out there for summer, a long time ago, they, they put it up here, you know, the state and you know, we're going back and forth about the agreement, the agreement, so I'm sure it's been worked out since then.
Anything else dockside? Docking fees?
So have you heard back from them?
Nope, they asked for uh, they were, they said, he sent me a note saying they'd get back to us, that was the last thing. Afforded that to them?
I don't know about that, no.
So that was the last I heard, but, I mean, I think it's a really good idea that we standardize it from the first.
Yeah, please.
Yeah, there were, there were discussions when we decided that two thousand, what, for the smaller vessels here, compared to C Street to River Roads or any of the smaller vessels, it's it's not even a good comp. So that's why the discussion came up, and C Street came in, and we considered more money from C Street, because of the volume of people they had on the boat.
Cause they disembark.
We increased for, increased for River Roads, where some of the smaller boats, they probably wouldn't have been, there were ones that would scare away.
Will they, will they be, um, having people come into the village, or are they just sort of?
River Roads, yeah, they usually drop off people, and then board people for a two-hour cruise on the Hudson, and then come back in, they pick up, drop off the people that did the cruise with, and pick up the people from Newburgh or wherever they, that's where they're based over, in Newburgh.
I don't know, we used to use that for the chamber.
They've done that a couple of times, the first year they did four cruises, and then they, but unless last year, they only have, make two or three this year. But they don't get the volume of people, um, that they anticipated.
Still waiting to hear back.
So, um, last year when we, when we talked about this, um, we, we talked about the idea of, um, the question of a per head charge. And I know you've already gone back and you've offered them this two, two, three dollar, um, at like escalator from the week to the weekend. But, you know, I I feel like it's important for us to keep in mind that they bring masses, massive amounts of people, and that it's not unusual to charge by the head. And that if we, um, if going forward, we wanna have a, you know, X number per head, but no less than the equivalent of the whatever per foot. Um, and I don't know if it's too late to, I, you know, I don't know where we are in this negotiation, if it's too late to.
If I've already put something in writing, it's a little kind of bad faith, to back and sell by it.
Yeah, I wish we had talked about it earlier, cause I I I did dig up the the reference to the materials you referred to before, and um, the thing about the C C Street, I think the, you said it was like three twenty-five, and, um, and I think that that might have come from, they pay a licensing fee to the port authority at the vineyard of three thousand seven fifty, and then they pay this per head charge on top of that, and, um, so that might have been where the, you know, like
The number came from.
seven fifty came from, but I didn't register it when you mentioned it, I couldn't, couldn't remember, but, um,
But, you know, overnight docking, sorry, do they overnight dock up there, or they just drop and go?
In February, I. Um, well, no, I think that they drop and go, it's like a, it's a real like a bus terminal type of experience, you know, they bring the people, they drop them off, they take people on, they go back to, um, the mainland. But we had talked about the idea of like, oh, we hadn't spoken to anybody about comps, and I did speak with the harbor master in the city of Kingston, and the manager of the marine dock there, as well as the dock master at the Hudson River Maritime Museum, um, on the rendezvous, um, the clerk in Tisbury, Massachusetts, and the comptroller at the steamship authority. And I emailed this material around to the 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 board in in February. Generally, all in their experience, it's a, it's a per person, per head kind of the charge, and, and I think that, uh, it's, I think it's worthwhile for us to, you know, respecting that, yeah, we want them to, we do want them to come here this summer, of course, or this fall, and, um, we've, recognizing we've offered them this three dollar rate, but maybe next year, we wanna keep in mind this sort of the per head idea, and, and also, we wanna know from them, I think, how many, exactly how many people they they bring to us. And that information is something they're obliged to document for the Coast Guard under Coast Guard law, and so we can require that they provide that to us. Um, and I would hope that maybe when we, um, when we, you know, enter into a resolution to approve the C Street coming, that that would be a condition of of granting the permit, that they would provide, provide that in addition to that question of the escrow for the engineering.
If you remember when I first got this assignment?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I did, there was a, I was given something with the amount of times they came in.
Mm-hmm.
And the amount of people.
Mm-hmm.
And the footage.
Mm-hmm.
And I did the math, and basically it was either two oh one or two oh six, so it was two dollars.
Each, each time, I'm sorry, oh, no, how many people?
Yeah, in other words, if they came in on a certain day, and we charged them by the head, it was two oh one, or two oh six, and vice versa. If we charged them by the foot, it was the other, so there was only a nickel difference on the amount of heads charged versus footage of the boat charged.
Right, and so.
That's how I worked it out, because I was trying to obviously get the higher price.
Right, do we know how, but I guess I'm still, I'm interested in it, how many people is that, because, um.
By the way, there's sixty-eight hundred people, I I have, I'll ask Mary for that paperwork again, I'll, I'll put it in my, my notes.
Yeah, I I guess, I mean, per, per boat, per boatload, cause they carry four hundred passengers.
Give me the whole total for every year, for the whole year.
For each time they got people?
For last year, everybody, every person.
Each, each docking experience, right, so, okay.
So I knew how many times they came in, to multiply that by the footage, and I knew how many people came in.
Right. Right.
And I would have, so, it was five cents difference.
And so. Oh, oh.
I'll get it again, and I'll look it up for you, but that's how we came to that conclusion, to go to three dollars. And I had also, I'm, a friend of mine is the Commodore in Garrison, and I had asked him, he goes up to, you know, Martha, he goes into Maine and stuff like that. And he's up in Kingston all the time, so we had had conversations about this, um, just getting a general sense of the going rate on the river.
The other, the other thing, yeah, I'm sorry, that's.
Well, I guess I'm just wondering, does that mean they're bringing only two hundred people every time?
You know, I, I mean, give you the math.
Well, cause, cause the boat is three dollars for per foot, right, and there's.
No, it was only two dollars last year, so, so that's what it was, two dollars a foot, we had worked out two dollars and one cent a foot.
Right, and how, how long are these boats?
And by then.
One four, one forty.
One forty-four.
Okay, so.
Two ninety.
That's two ninety, and two ninety.
Times eighteen.
Divided by, no, no, divided by, to get to the per head.
And it's, it was one fifty on, the boat holds one fifty or one fifty-five?
No, the boat's hold four hundred and fif- four hundred and five passengers, so.
No, four hundred.
Whatever, I just took the total number of people, I don't know how many were on any particular boat.
Right, I guess what you're saying that, yeah, I understand, I understand that, and I understand what you're saying to me, and I'm saying that based on your calculation of, you know, two dollars and change per head, right?
They gave, I got a total, other people, older. Right.
That they're bringing a four hundred and five passenger ship, and they're telling us that they only brought a hundred and forty-five people to us.
No, over the course of the year, there was six, almost seven thousand people.
In that.
I'll get you, oh.
They could just use the count number, four hundred, times it's, times it by eighteen cruises, eighteen boats that they applied for, which is seventy-two hundred. Or you said six thousand or something?
Sixty-eight hundred.
They brought sixty-eight hundred.
So sixty-eight hundred, about roughly.
Okay, and the, and the idea is that we're getting two dollars per, per head?
So they didn't fill all of us. It was, on one side it was two dollars a foot, and the other side it was two thousand, two dollars and one cent a foot, and we worked it out, and two oh six a person.
Okay, well, if it's per person, then it's nearly fourteen hundred, fourteen thousand dollars, but this, the calculus that we looked at last week, when we're, when we were talking about the per foot, it doesn't, that's, it's not fourteen thousand, we aren't gonna get fourteen thousand dollars, we're gonna get under nine thousand dollars.
We didn't charge them by head, we charged them by the foot.
I know, that is the point, the point is, is that if, if we were, if you're saying that, if you're saying that.
If we had charged them in the same year, if we charged them by the head or by the foot, we would have made a nickel more a person.
I'm saying that that doesn't work out if you.
Well, then, I, it worked out on what I did and I'll be happy to bring it to you, show it to you.
All right, okay. I guess, my point is, you know, ultimately, if they're bringing us massive amounts of people and they're bringing us these that, you know, per, I think Alison Anthony gave the comment that, you know, you have this infrastructure and you need to figure out, you know, the pressures on the infrastructure and so.
Yeah, the other, um, Mary, I had Mary take up, um, all of the specs on the dock.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we have other local residents gonna go out there and um look at the uh, you know, the rafting, the deaths, all of this stuff, so we can, you know, get a better idea of, of where we are infrastructure wise at this point in time and, you know, help us plan a future of what we, what we're gonna have, what we're gonna need and, and where we're gonna be, so. You know, hope, you know, soon we can hopefully get all this tied together, so we know exactly where we are and where we need to go. As far as fees and, and who can and who can and where should and shouldn't, so.
Also, the um, the rafting, when they've done that, it's because, they said that it was because they couldn't park over at West Point, so they wanted to park over.
Correct. Instead of, you know, driving around wasting fuel, like, you know, and some theories say rafting doesn't make a difference, others say, how can that be, so.
Well, it makes a difference to them.
To them, right, right, but as far as um, stress on our dock.
Right, because you. Right, but if it makes a difference to them, then they should make it worth our while.
There's potentially, there's potentially a fee in making a difference, sure.
Parking fee.
Sure, rafting fee.
Rafting fee. That's where we're gonna make our money, guys, well, over.
Is their insurance, their insurance covers any kind of possible damage, problem, any kind of excessive load with the again, everything you just talked about, the structural work that was done down there, support.
When is the structural assessment gonna be completed, do you know?
Uh, I just dug up the stuff today, so I just gotta get my copies and get it out, so.
Okay. Are we paying for that?
Turn it down.
The structural assessment?
I mean, not recently, but I mean, that, back in the day when, when Ed Trimmel installed it.
No. Right, the bollards, yep, yep, yep. Yeah, I have all that in touch.
With the engineers that were working with it.
Right, I mentioned, right.
Yeah, we have that, yeah, the, the only thing we, we didn't assess the rafting effect. So that's, so it's basically just getting that extra information. Chapter one of four signs.
Uh, it's too late, we can't talk about it.
What'd you find out?
Alright, so, in the first Musk versus the village of Cold Spring, which was August nineteenth of two thousand and five, before a decision was made by the court, the village conceded that chapter one oh four was unconstitutional on its face. So, it's unconstitutional on its face, they divided district court, public record, everyone is on notice, it remains unconstitutional on its face. The reason why is because the way chapter one oh four reads, you can apply for a permit to put a sign on public property, which could be given at the discretion of the mayor.
Oh, no.
And it's those who.
Sorry, Ralph, you have a lot of time for that.
Thank God it's unconstitutional.
Yeah, the, you know, the issue is that there are no criteria or standards for the mayor's role I own in the issuance of permits. And so the, the question for the board is, is do you wanna permit signs, handbills, notices, placards on public property, you have the ability to say no. And if you would like to, then we just need a, a, um a consensus from the board as to what they think is, is appropriate and what I, what I wanna do is preface this with I don't think it's appropriate for us to rewrite one oh four to create a new sign code for the, the village of Cold Spring, I think that should require, you know, sick, planning advice to the board, if you guys wanna make a quick fix to one oh four to identify some criteria that you guys think is appropriate, then that's the discussion that we should plan to have, is, you know, the size of a placard, you know, I, I think it goes like you would see in New York City, you know, you're talking eight and a half by eleven yard sale flyers, that's probably the difficult thing that you're gonna, you know, you come across, you know, vans playing and, and wherever. But those are the, the uh, the things that you wanna consider, you know, going forward as to um, what it's gonna take to fix one oh four so that it's constitutional, but do it with the mindset that, you know, we know that this larger rezoning is gonna loom and probably be more appropriate to capture, picture it in that as opposed to, you know, doing a large sign rezoning right now separate from that.
So without a quick fix right now, we have no enforcement whatsoever for signage on public property.
We have no prohibition. That's right.
And how, what about the pieces for the village, so, like signage themselves?
No, the village is uh, do as I.
Do as I say, not as I do, remember that from the world?
Every municipality has.
I still get that.
Oh.
Has that ability, so we, we do not have to comply with, with any laws that you say.
So the Fourth of July signs can stay, Ruth, it's all good.
I just want.
Well, I mean.
At least until July fifth.
No, it's just midnight the night of.
There you go.
I'll take it down.
So um, up until, you know, up until we had the sign that was attached to a street sign, have we had any, have we had any practical problems with that? I know that there's sort of a visual cacophony and, you know, there are two people that I know that are vocal about it, but I.
No, I know, there's been, there has been complaints and, and and apparently illegal, illegal remedies of, you know, some were construction signs, um, you know, so there have been issues raised and they have been enforced unconstitutionally, I guess you'd say.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, and I think the conversation we had last week was that.
Over the weekend?
You know, the parcel of property that we're talking about isn't even ours to enforce, it's the state's.
If, right, we don't have, we, any permission that we give for compliance with the code, um, if it's in, if it's on someone else's property, such as DOT, it would always be subject to the consent of the, the DOT.
So that cacophony of signs on the corner is on DOT right away, it's not village. So whatever we do with the sign code isn't going to necessarily solve what the whole, it is.
Well, we can, you know, we could, we could say you can't have a sign in, in, in the right of way, the problem is, just like you said, we could do it on our own rights of way.
Yeah.
You know, um, the state, just, if, if you guys have ever been through the use and occupancy permit requirements with the state, just, uh, I do, we don't, we have developers. Uh, they used to not look for, they didn't get into what the zoning code for in a particular jurisdiction, now they do. So, um, you know, if you wanna get into dimensional requirements with the DOT, let's say I wanna have a sign on my property, um, part of my property is in the, well, not that, many people have property that is um, connects to the right of way and that's the only appropriate place to put, let's say, a freestanding sign, right? Uh, very common along Route twenty-two in, in, in southeast, it's basically every property, twenty-two is very wide and, but that's the appropriate place, you know, so you go to the DOT, the DOT says, send us your zoning code and then, then uh, um, lately they've said, send us the approval from the municipality that per, that says that, that the sign that you're gonna put is conforming, subject to permission by DOT. So, the, the issue you guys have is no one from DOT comes along and, and, you know, picks signs off their property.
And how many of those signs on twenty-two are there illegally, but DOT just doesn't bother to remove?
Uh, you know what, I'll tell you when they come down, because I was talking to the supervisor in the town of southeast, when they come mow.
That's when everything comes down.
That's when everything comes down, you know.
Everywhere.
And, and it's.
Which is once a year now, because.
Yeah, whenever.
If it's the game, if the DOT doesn't come in mow or.
If it's not impacting.
No, it isn't, no.
I did.
Yeah, they, there's a couple areas where they do.
We're mowing.
Yeah, so.
Our property, as usual.
Or homeowners are mowing it.
We mow like, you know, going up the hill, three or one, we're mowing.
Well, you wouldn't leave how many people don't know where their property lines.
They don't, un- until the wall starts falling down, then they find out, look, it goes on mine.
Right, we know where that property line goes.
It's my wall, stay off it, but since it fell down, you gotta fix your, how's it my wall now, but that's a whole nother story.
So are you saying that we can have some sort of jurisdiction over the space, but it has to be, and we have to reference DOT? You know, specific to that nine D, and because there are other spots that, you know.
DOT will look for, if they're gonna give permission for signage, they're gonna look for compliance with our zoning code. So, so as long as, you know, they're gonna look for dimensional compliance, uh, because that's the only thing that should be left after
Mm-hmm.
their review to see if it should, something should be permitted in the right of way. So what we should do is, you know, essentially we should treat it as if we, we have jurisdiction over it, even though we don't, because then the DOT knows, alright, well, this is the particular you know, we're not just saying you can put any size sign you want, wherever you can, as long as it's on the DOT right of way, so we have to comply with whatever the village's zoning code is. So, dimensionally is what we should strive for, putting those limitations on.
Right now, one of four just says no signage within the public right of way, period. It doesn't, it doesn't give a size or anything like that.
No, no, right now it says, um, it says in any street or public place of the village, so I, I would say to you that it, it, it really doesn't regulate the DOT right of way, because it's not a, a certainly it's in, it's, it's in a street, but it's not a street of the village, you know, even, even though it goes through the village, it's not your street.
Removed by any citizen of the village, that's nice. Anybody can remove signs.
And the funny part is, is that it's without the permit of the mayor, that's the problem.
But it's only you, Ralph.
But like, this was enacted at a time where.
Sure, well, we understand, you know, if we well, I mean, if we know that the signs are so we have to create the legislation that makes signs illegal or certain signs illegal or illegal.
Illegal. Or legal, we need to prescribe them.
Either or, and then when they're on this DOT right of way, how do we have them removed? Can we, for instance, sign is larger than what our code says, but it's on DOT, we never get permission, how do we get DOT, how do we get those signs removed?
Um, I, what I would be doing is.
Load a group. Maybe one Saint Mary's and everything.
Um, we can call our regional rep at DOT and work out an agreement for authority to enforce.
Okay.
Okay, that, that's number one. Um, they shouldn't have an issue with that because we're gonna be doing them a favor.
Sure.
Okay, um, without that you know, it, it's almost one of those things where you might as well just go do because the risk of, of retribution is, is minimal. You know, the cost of commencing an action against the village, taking that sign that's违法 legally on the state's property is, think about that.
But it's already been done once, not even state property, but.
Well, no, I mean, Glasgow is a, is a, is a totally different, you know, that, that's, that's First Amendment right to free speech on your own private property, not a public property, you don't have that right to public you know, you don't have that right on, on, um, to put something onto the village property, that, that's a different story. You know, if you're gonna do it on village property, then it's gonna be in accordance with the village code as long as it's what's called content neutral, you know? Um, and that, that's the, the essence of First Amendment is if you're gonna regulate, you can't regulate what someone is saying, you could regulate, you know, the you know, kind of the.
The delivery device.
The delivery device, but not the message.
So what do we do for things like the sign that is tied to the street sign, top of the hill for the people's market, that has been there for.
Well, right now it's, it's, it's not there illegally, so.
Because the sign, even though it's on like street sign, like we took the one down.
Because you don't have.
With the agreement with the authority of enforcement, DOT would think of that.
Right, that would, yeah.
So I mean, that, that's the next step, so.
Yeah, that's what we need to do.
Okay.
So we need to put in not only where, but length of time?
Well, that's, that's only one.
But currently with that, we have to come up with guidelines.
Yeah, you need to, you know, you would need a, another sentence, a second sentence after the existing sentence that says, you know, any permit to be applied for from the mayor shall comply with the following criteria A, B, C, D, E, F, G, provided it complies with such criteria, permit shall issue.
Well, and, and, I, I think it should, without permit from the village, code enforcement.
You don't wanna be the.
No, it's not just for me, the person after me, it just.
Well, but um, wouldn't uh if we were, if you didn't want to do it personally.
Or village board, board of trustees.
But if you didn't wanna do it personally, couldn't you put it's office, you know?
Well, I, I, I mean, yeah, I mean, you know, my thing is always.
It could be a.
You always wanna take away the ability of, of one person to make that decision when the rest of them, they agree.
Yeah. What it's gonna take for constitutionality in.
Well, because the, the criteria will be there, so the mayor can only make that upon a criteria he was satisfied that, I guess.
It, it's gonna be a.
Because it'll be as long as it, hey, as long as it fits into this dimension and you're not up there for longer than X.
If it complies with the checklist, you get it.
Yeah, that's fine.
It's not a document.
That's fine.
Not to the check.
Right, it's, it's not, you know, there is no discretion, it's, it's, you comply, you get.
That's fine.
And so, so do we want to, so we wanna come up with that criteria, that, that size?
But, yeah, you guys should think about what.
Have any other clients that already have some of this effect, or you could, not read that through?
You know, I, I circulated southeast, there's something, it's a surprise, take a look.
Alright, so we'll, we'll, we'll take it, we'll take those.
Yeah, I mean, you guys both look at those down that line, calls it, you know?
I don't know, so.
Those are the ones that I, uh, I've been working on the Dover code with, for to make some revisions, but um, I, I circulated that because of the political, you know, it had timeframes on, on, you know, elections and things like that, so that we're
Yeah, no, that's, you know, helpful.
So, do, um, do we wanna schedule this discussion for
Well, let's, if you guys wanna, um yeah, I guess that's probably the best way to work with orders.
Well, or, or uh, we'll get it done and circulate it, then we'll set up a date.
Well, no, I, I just set a date where, where you guys will get me some thoughts, so that I can, you know, draft some sentences for you guys to take a look at.
Okay. So I need to. Okay. Twenty seconds, is that too late, is it soon?
July?
Yeah.
July.
Your agenda, um, John, or is this just here for the information?
Oh, good question.
Put, it'll be on the agenda, to trust.
Alright, well, if I'm gonna get the information by the twenty-second, then just give me some time, but.
No. Well, I, I mean. Okay.
Well, do, do we wanna have a conversation about, I mean, if we're gonna be, if we're gonna be establishing criteria for signs that we wanna talk about amongst ourselves and maybe figure out who we, who else, and maybe we might be reaching out to find out you know, what's useful, what's good about having the signs, what's bad about it, you know, if there are things that are good about having people put up signs, what are they, what are they used for? What are the kinds of signs we wanna encourage, what do they look like, how big are they, what are they made of?
I think there was something in, in the comp plan about not discouraging local type signs, you know, like the lady Blue Devils hangs over at the point and when I first moved here, it seemed like there were more signs about them, you know, they are, I need to catch them.
Maybe they had a better record than you were.
But, um, we opted with it then.
Well, we'll put it on the agenda for the twenty-second and whatever we have, we'll, we'll discuss.
Okay. Alright, okay.
Sound good?
Yeah.
Uh, anything else? Public comment?
I just have a, a comment and suggestion about the Big Belly.
Okay.
Um, I guess I would say that my suggestion would be before going to the county, I think we should wait to see what the prices that Stephanie can get the used ones for. Um, and then also too, we should look at sponsoring, like maybe restaurants that are, they are near, can sponsor Big Belly with the new price as well and then.
Yeah.
Um, in my old corporate world, whenever we pilot stuff, we never piloted with just one, we always pilot with several. So I don't think we're gonna be able to get an idea of how they work if we're just doing one, so.
Yeah, and, because we did talk about that, we were, they do make them where you can, um s- signs attach them. have signs attached to them for that sponsorship, uh, maybe stickers or something would be better, cuz we're afraid it may, it may look tacky, but we, same thing, you know, see what their pricing is with that, or so, I mean, that's a great idea, you know, when you, you know, see if the, the folks are looking to, you know, wanna stick it on the side, I I don't know. But I think it's a, we should definitely, I think that'll help against money, I think it's definitely worth looking into. Anything else, public comment?
And I just, cuz we, just when you guys are talking about the signs, maybe there's a fee for signage? I mean, you know, you guys can decide what that is, but so maybe it's a nominal fee that you have to put up a sign, you have to pay fifty dollars for thirty days or something like that, I mean, I, I don't know, but.
It's a good idea, it's revenue. So.
Have you come across that anywhere?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, perfect.
Ralph, on the same note, um, Stephanie, you were mentioning about they weren't doing any leasing anymore, there are private organizations, maybe do some outside leasing,
Yeah.
be a little more creative in the outside leasing, maybe allow you to get more over a longer period of time. The other thing is.
Oh, you mean a third party vendor?
A third party vendor, be able to do a lease.
Yeah, you know, I've been looking, I mean, that was suggested to me, um.
The the other, the other item is, as soon as you get the groves, grove off the 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 insurance bill, that's gonna equal somewhere around four or five thousand dollars, so there's some found money that you can, you know, offset as well.
We love found money.
Well, it's not found.
We don't, we hide it after we find it.
It's always earned.
It's at least, I think, it's right now we insure for local cost in case of a catastrophe or something.
You should, the grove is only four hundred and forty five.
Yeah, I got anything like that.
But anyways, gotta look at the.
It's like. But over a course of time, it would be worth it.
It will be, yeah.
Yeah.
Any else, public comment?
One last point, um, I was questioning whatever the board did years back, we had the lease for dockside in front of us, and the mayor at the time, and that, because we were discussing the possibility of putting a second dock in, and there were some, actually some, um, basically some captains that indicated that they would put a dock in at their own expense, if they had access to the village, to take some of the pressure off the front dock. Um, one of the reasons that that lease got sent back was because they didn't address the riparian rights in the lease. Um, I don't know if that's been, uh, if it's, that's outlined in the current lease, or if it's just came back the same way it was originally or not, but.
Well, it's a different agreement, but it doesn't talk about the, it doesn't talk about specifically riparian rights.
And then the only reason that they were talking about that is they were talking if they're gonna develop a harbor, if you're gonna do anything, you know, you will be touching the bottom.
Right, right.
And they just wanna make sure that the state didn't have any issue on it, so I don't know if they addressed that, that that was, that was a huge consideration, that was the major reason that we put it back to have some conversation, and then the the state kinda just seemed to go cold, period, not, I don't think on that issue, there were just other things, forces at play.
Anything else? Yes, sir?
I'd like to know, um, when we're, we'll see the video cameras that Catherine and Mike promised us for uh, video recording these meetings.
Yeah, um, actually had a conversation today.
John, Sarah was here last week assessing the room to give us a quote, just to come see what he came in at versus the uh, the other quotes that we had gotten.
And ironically, um, you know, a setup like yours is also probably, well, I mean, it's, it's definitely an option, it is, is definitely, um.
It's an option.
It's great. It works.
Exactly, and, you know, we we may, you know, we may consider doing, um, you know, the regular monthly, um, with our vendor, if we can renegotiate a price, or what we feel we should do, and do all other, um, you know, but you know, we just have to guarantee the rights to the DVDs and, you know, make them acceptable to people, so, yeah, we're, it's not more stuff.
I hope the plan includes uh, providing video online as well and not just DVDs, because that's really the medium today.
Well, the the DVD of record would be available to cable vision for broadcast, in order to broadcast online through our website. I forget what the price was from the vendor at Nikon, but it's outrageous, it's like another extra ten thousand dollars that I'm gonna pay for the website. Uh, there, whether we're authorized to start our own Vimeo account or something like that.
Yeah, I mean, other mun- municipalities do post on Vimeo and YouTube, so I don't see why we can't.
Sure. Thank you. Anything else?
Okay, no, shouldn't we do?
Second. All right, thank you.